Like to call a meeting to order, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Seeing any additions to the agenda, we'll have. Five different POs, three for county attorney, one for KHCA PAC dues and one PO for Kenworth truck. Uh, which will be later. Minutes, anyone? Has everyone had a chance to read the minutes from last week?
I believe your consent was presented.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports, Jack, do you have any? Casey.
Um, yes, I have a few things. Um, first of all, thank you. We've started getting submissions um for. Community members that are interested in serving on our senior village advisory board. Um, we realized when we put the info out that we hadn't um given kind of an end date for um applicants. So we want to encourage, you know, if you're interested in serving, um, this would be a great opportunity um for our nursing home. And we're going to say we would like to see um all letters of intent or interest by December ninth. So it gives a couple more weeks to get um people in those various categories. And then we'll be able to take a look at the pool and uh make some selections, so. Um, also, we have a speed test um that our IT director has put into motion for us. Um, it's on our Facebook page and our website. And what that is, is it helps us to obtain. Data from county residents on their internet speeds and um what their service is currently. Um, we will be able to keep that in-house in the county and utilize it for future grant opportunities. So please take part in that if you haven't already. Also, our IT director has put into place uh constituent anonymous feedback forms for us. And it's incredible, I'm excited, we've gotten um several. And so I was just going to cover those um since they're anonymous. I think um it lets people's voices be heard. And then also we can address it um and take the constructive criticism and uh and be better, so. One, the first one that we received um. Ask if we can address the lateness of the real estate tax statements. That are due each and every year on the same date as I see it. As putting a burden on everyone, giving them less than thirty days to come up with the funds if their taxes have increased significantly. It also makes banks scramble to get out the escrow funds for taxes. Since they don't have an invoice to pay either. Per Atchison County website, taxes become due November first of twenty twenty-two. And the first half payment is to be paid by December twentieth, twenty twenty-two, or there is a penalty. So um. Our county treasurer um has been made aware of this feedback to us. And um, I think, do you wanna just give a little insight of what you do in preparation with those?
Yeah, and I noticed then that um. Submission, it does say the taxes become due November first. That's typically um by statute when I get the levies. And I, I just got those yesterday. So I was able to get the information put into our CIC software yesterday afternoon. And get everything to the printer. It's uploaded to the state site for online payments now. Um, also on our website, the information is out there, and so. Um, I tried as quickly as I could, I didn't have it until yesterday, though, so. Um, if I don't have the information, there's nothing that I can do about it. So we're expecting that those are gonna start mailing by the thirtieth. Um, our company has said they will try to mail them sooner if they're able to get them up then, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next is um reporting an abandoned house um and giving us the address. Um, explaining no one's lived there for years and we understand um that the water is turned on and off. And turned off the heat, um pipes are broke and. The owners just walked away, so that now the house has mold problems. And also various animals have been seen going in and out of the house and it's unsafe for the neighborhood. So um we will be looking into that with um Northeast Kansas Environmental is how we handle our nuisance uh reports. The next is Atchison curbs. Um, they're awful, they're ugly and no purpose, not to mention the zigzag lines downtown. What can I say? Hopefully you're thinking the same thoughts, too many stop signs. You used to be able to. Go north and south without a stop sign and go, it worked for years without having all the stop signs. Why all the south and north streets have four-way stops? You're gonna say it's because of the school. They have crossing guards indefinitely marked so that for thirty minutes drivers can figure it out. The slanted parking is awful, the trucks stick out into the driving lanes and you have to maneuver. To the oncoming traffic's lanes to get around, not to mention delivery trucks trying to get around without hitting the driver. Loading and unloading, stop listening to just one group of people in town and broken record excuses. Do the smile and nod that should be sometime. Think what all residents would want. Also, the people who work for the city shouldn't have to wait for complaints to do their job. They need to be held accountable. They should be writing up a report of all nuisances, violations of pets, animals, rental properties, et cetera. They want the neighbors and taxpayers to be the bad guys. We don't need offices covered, we need to see trucks in neighborhoods. Ride with the tax and appraiser to save gas. There are too many people who are playing favorites. Families in this town will say it's who you know, that's not good. If you know people and friends, the law is the law. We are the taxpayers and should be provided these services, thank you, I appreciate you reading. Um, again, I think this is a pretty common uh misconception of county government and and city um authority. And a lot of these don't pertain to to us um as county commissioners. But um the one thing I take of this is um the nuisance reports and kind of how we handle those is when we are. Um, when a nuisance is brought to our attention, we immediately notify Northeast Kansas Environmental Services. And then they start the um investigation purposes, so. Um, all the other things mentioned in this, I would um steer you probably to the city of Atchison for that. Thanks um, Jack, for believing in science during COVID, I appreciate all your efforts. I have very little faith in the other two sitting commissioners and zero in the man taking your place. Thank you for your feedback. Um, I'd like to compliment you on the fine job that. You, that the commission did on hoodwinking the city residents in your districts. Leading the city residents to believe that this would be a savings to them is clever. Reducing the sales tax with a very much likely hundred dollar increase. While increasing their, oh sorry, hundred dollar savings while increasing their trash service costs was pretty slick. Too bad there weren't any watchdogs on guard to notice, this won't be. Um, again, we as county commissioners um had authority to put a sales tax question on the ballot for the people. Of the county to determine um the outcome, and we did that. Uh, beyond this, we have no authority in what your trash fills will be if you live in the city of Atchison. Um, I just wanted to let you know that I think the white lines on two hundred and eighty-six and Edwards are the best thing done by the road and bridge deployment in a long time. I also think it would be great if they could get into their budget to do the same from US one fifty-nine south. To the county line and eventually all of our paved roads. I feel that the road is much safer, especially at night. I don't know, um Joe's our road and bridge director, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but that is in his wheelhouse and he has um. Identified certain grants, this was kind of like the opening of the door for us to get a couple to see, you know, the feedback from constituents. It's been positive, um outpouring of positive. And so um we will definitely be looking at adding that um to additional roads and looking at funding opportunities um in the future. Um, so that, we appreciate your feedback, so thank you for utilizing that tool. It's only been up a week and we're already getting a lot of feedback, so that's good. This is the only other opportunity really outside of the. Outside of the agenda for me to um. Speak and I'm not trying to put my other two commissioners on the spot because we had a discussion this morning. Um, but there's also decisions as county commissioners that we make that need to be made and reasoning behind them. And I have um, my gut is telling me to make this decision, um so, but I wanna explain it. Um, of why, but. I want to make, so first of all, we discussed our joint communication resolution. We currently have a resolution in place twenty fourteen dash thirteen ninety. Um, it is one, two, three, four pages. That is basically just bluff at this point, um where it's not being followed. It doesn't pertain to our current situation. Um, and after, after April first, um when the new tax that was just voted on gets put into place. It really, more of it won't pertain to us. Um, the discussion. I feel I should make a motion to rescind this resolution, and this is why. Because as a commissioner, I want to do a hundred percent everything transparent with the public and all of the people that I work with. Um, it was discussed of the county commissioners need to rewrite this now, um based on what. Is actually happening um and how things work. And then to go through the motion of we rewrite it and then we just repeal to replace. I don't like that for myself, just for the fact I don't wanna just repeal and replace something that I've came up with, um. Because I want feedback, um and I believe that if we would re- rescind this resolution. It's not going to change anything because we still have. A board. We still have people doing their jobs and looking at public safety as a priority, not politics. Um, and then also that would allow us the next four months to get a draft. And to seek feedback and to give. The folks at anywhere in the county that have a voice or wanna have a voice at this resolution or input. Um, an opportunity to come talk to me about it. Um, because I plan, I got the word document today and I plan to kinda go through it and sift out the pieces that don't pertain to us um currently, so. There's several areas, but um, so for that, this isn't. Coming from a place of not wanting to work together, this isn't coming from a place of, this is coming from a place of wanting to work together. So I think if I, I wanna make a motion to rescind the joint. Communication resolution number twenty fourteen dash thirteen ninety with intent to have a new one. Written and put into place for all of us to abide by and know how we work together and that we work together well. Um, before the new tax. Happens in April first, so. That's.
The motions, you make the motions directly.
I don't know when to do it, so I just, I just.
I didn't know if that was a motion or.
If you want me to make the motion, I just needed to get out like how I feel about it and. That I want, I want to work together, like it's not from a place of, it's just from a place of a four-page document that means nothing, like. And. And being able to convey to everyone in Atchison County like my intent. So that's wherever you want me chairman to, if you want me to say that again, but. This is my only platform outside of the agenda to be able to.
Okay.
To give feedback.
I don't know if that is a motion or uh that will be something that will be forthcoming in the future. Is that a motion?
I, yes, I would make a motion to.
I, I make a second with, with uh discussion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, start the discussion.
Yeah, this is, this is a. Long time, this is part of the. The new tax program. And we had a resolution that we called for inter-local agreements. Um, we had a. We had many meetings, but inter-local agreements, we had a committee who recommended. How we should do it, it was three members of the. Of the, it was appointed by the county, three members, what about the city, they worked for eighteen months to get it accomplished. When it was done, the county commissioners a hundred percent. Bought into it, we were, thought it was the right way to go, not everybody in the area thought that. So it never, we, we spent that two thousand fourteen, the two thousand twenty-three almost. Without an inter-local agreement to share the money for general communications and solid waste. So a lot of this was born, expenses was born by the county taxpayers. And I, I realize that county taxpayers are. Are all city residents also, and um. There's a board that is a governing body, they actually called the shots after the budget was made. We uh, we're supposed to do a. We were supposed to do a. Annual budget approval process. The, the city would do the budget pro- process, the county would do the budget process and we would approve them. Independently, a couple times we tried to be together to do it. The city didn't vote for the process several times. Once it was over eighteen thousand dollars and the, you know, the sheriff was charged too much on a two million dollar budget. So there's a, there's a lot of bad will that's gone on in this resolution. And in my opinion, the sooner we get rid of it, the better off we are. And the next step, step is, I don't think we should wait four months. Give direction on how we wait, how we move forward with advisory board. I think it should be done, we should be nimble, we should work quickly. To get that done, so.
Okay, well, I, I have, do have some reservations about this, I mean, more I just, I do think it needs to be replaced. And, but it was probably about six weeks ago, we had the joint communications board that came here. And there had been talk of uh repealing this resolution and. At that point, we kind of gave the, the board at least that there wouldn't be any quick. Change to the current situation, so, I mean, where I do think it needs to be updated. I, you see where my quandary is, you know, that um. Where I, I definitely wanna vote for it, but then there, I do have reservations, cuz I, I'm the one that she spoke of that said that. We'd wait four months or give, get direction, cuz I kinda like to know where we're going before I quit what we have. So um, that, that's my quandary today, so.
And I appreciate that, and that's the thing is, we want to make sure that we're able to communicate with the public because. I want it to be thought out, I want it to be cohesive and to encompass. A path forward together and to stop dividing lines between the city and the county. And, you know, we're running a dispatch center that's for all public safety entities in the county. And that should be the priority, not the politics. And I just felt like in my gut, if. If I don't make this motion to rescind. And we wait until we repeal and replace, no one else will know that until the motion's made and it's a done deal. So I want it to be known that this, and I, I plan to put this on my social media page for anyone that wants to read what it says. But it's not been followed, there's so many problems that, I mean, all of us agreed that it's. It's a document, but there's really no validity to it anymore, um. So I just, I just wanna communicate that, that way. As I tweak down my thoughts of, of change, I will communicate that. Always, so. That's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye. And if you would have told me months ago that I'd been voting against it, but it's, to me, it's a thing of timing. I want the uh. Current board to know that, you know. I felt like we kind of gave assurances there, and I want to make sure that we don't burn bridges. So I, I do have your ear, I'm gonna listen to you, and uh I'm not saying that eventually I would have. Not been a hundred percent in favor because the current document isn't being followed, so. I just wanna explain why I am, cuz a lot of people are gonna turn heads when I voted against that.
Well, and also, I, I see that, and I was present at that meeting, um, it was just Eric and I. Um, and my word is all I have, and I very much want to hear feedback and still valid. I've always valued uh the chief of police and our rural fire and um the fire chief of the city of Atchison, I value their opinion. I don't, this does not change anything that I've ever said that. Other than the fact that it's now gone and we can work on what works for all of us to move forward, so. Thank you for that, because I, I just wanna make sure everyone knows, like, I don't change based on conversation if. They were sitting here, I'm just going with my gut on this one and it just felt. It feels like the right thing to do, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, well, fails, or it passes two. Okay, next EMS commission report, do you have anything, just submitted it for file?
Yes. I don't know if that's out of the.
I didn't know if you were, since you were here, if you was gonna say anything about it.
For other purposes, and once you have questions.
Okay, thank you, uh Wes.
Good afternoon.
Yes.
It's representative of the commission for our um sand replacements, which are sand. Um, storage area network device is where we house, house all our production data, it was purchased in two thousand thirteen and there's. Thing that are being used with ARPA funds to replace it and the amount of fifty-three thousand zero forty-two eighty-two. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, what is sands?
Um, storage area network.
So. And this is budget.
And this note, this is, was budget for next year, but we're using ARPA funds to pay for it instead, since we pulled that out of the budget to stay R and R. And this is something, um, this current device goes end of, end of life um in two thousand twenty-three, I think it is July.
So it.
So we're just moving ahead to using our buttons.
Okay, now will that, is there a guarantee when we're gonna actually install it or?
So um, it'll be thirty to sixty days before we have all the equipment. Um, so it'll be February-ish before we have all the equipment, and that's when we'll get installed.
So that, equipment. Well, should it be timely or is it, you know, there's been a lot of.
So I've asked about that and they won't, they don't see any problems getting it.
With the supply chain issues that we've had, is like pickups and everything else that we've been having problem with, so I wanna.
Yeah, no, there's no supply chain, I'm told there's not a supply chain issue with this equipment.
I think to approve is presented.
And the lifespan's ten years on this one?
Um, typically, we stretched it out a little farther than it should have been. Um, typically seven to eight years is where you want to have that, um, but as long as you're not having any problems.
Yeah, we'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the sand. Agreement, all in favor say aye. Passes three to zero.
It is. It is, there's lots of documentation that goes. In this project. And so this will be completed off hours, so it doesn't shut down our offices, because if we did it during business hours, it would shut down every office. In the county with the exception of the law enforcement center.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have uh several POs. We've got three that are for the county attorney's office, uh which is going through some renovation. Should we do these separate or can we do them all together?
Are they all for the county attorney's office?
Yes. One is drywall supplies in an amount of one thousand ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Paint is eighty-three sixty-eight. And uh lighting is seven hundred ninety-six sixty-four. I hear a motion to uh accept these POs.
I'll make a motion to accept the three POs.
Go here a second.
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded to accept, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next is a PO for KHCA PAC actives, which is uh maybe. Casey, you can explain this a little bit more since you were the one.
Yep, it's Kansas Healthcare Association, um, and it's for an annual membership that will provide um many resources for our nursing staff. Um, at Senior Village, um, it is a tool that came recommended by Scott Brunner, the deputy secretary of K Dads. And I would make a motion to approve.
An amount of three thousand fifty-three dollars and twenty-six cents. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero, we also had mentioned this morning talking about this, that uh we'll review it. Hopefully quarterly and for sure next year when they come due before we proceed, make sure we're getting our money's worth out of those uh dues. Then we have a. We have a PO for the.
Oh, it's actually an agreement, I'll read it.
Okay, you can come on up and present this, it's more. And the amount that it is.
I have one other thing that was on the general, if you guys, let me just say. Uh, Kim has been moved to uh promoted to assistant food and bridge superintendent, and I haven't failed to make that. Public knowledge, so I wanna apologize to her and let everybody know that, that she has been promoted and congratulate her when you see her.
Okay.
All right, so. We are basically ordering a twenty twenty-four eight eighty Kenworth dump truck with salt bed. Plow and all the attachments. Uh, this is just an agreement saying that we are ordering it, we're hoping to get it this year. And in this agreement, you'll be in next year. My next year, twenty twenty-three, sorry, pardon me. If the price to the dealer of a series body type of customer is changed by the manufacturer before delivery, customer. Of the vehicle ordered by customer, dealer has a right to change cash delivery price to customer. If the customer does not agree with such price change, the customer may cancel this agreement purchase. So if the vehicle goes up more than what we feel we're comfortable with or we want, we can deny the purchase of the vehicle. And I wanted everybody to be aware of that. The price of the vehicle is three hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and one dollars, and it would be in our lease purchase. To purchase this vehicle for next year.
And this would be through Sourcewell?
Through Sourcewell, and our Sourcewell number is on this copy, uh one, three, four, seven, one, five.
And we are going with them because of the availability of trucks?
Availability of trucks, our last truck was a Kenworth. Uh, we also have Kenworth is in Topeka and St. Joe as far as if we need work done, they're close, they're easy to get to. And uh availability also, yes.
So they're the only ones that even remotely could give us a chance.
Give us a chance to get one in this next year, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I just kinda wanted that out there so the public would know why we're going that way. Do I hear a motion to accept the intention of purchasing the uh Kenworth truck?
So.
It's been moved.
We're signing a what, a purchase order?
It's not a purchase order.
It's an agreement. It's for the chairman to sign, the other commission.
Yes.
Okay, so is that the motion?
The motion, well, she made the motion to, to go forward with the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry. Uh, many old or unfinished business. County councilor updates.
Uh, last week when I was gone, um, I had left you with a draft of a resolution. That repealed the nineteen ninety-three sales tax and uh. Directed the Kansas Department of Revenue to begin collecting the point seven-five percent sales tax.
Directed the Kansas Department of Revenue to begin collecting the point seventy-five percent sales tax, it was voted on. On November eighth, so uh, made a couple of tweaks to that resolution. Most notably removing the first paragraph that had whereas. Clause in it, uh, as it wasn't needed, added a line to. Or a phrase um. To the third whereas paragraph that just made clear that budget, that the revenues would be fixed to the purpose of joint law enforcement. Communications and solid waste disposal. Uh, and then correcting a date that was already included in section one, I, twenty twenty-two, and it was twenty twenty-three, obviously. Uh, so this uh, this is the resolution that actually authorizes or levies the tax. And then this needs to be provided to the Department of Revenue, along with a copy of the earlier resolution and. The results of the elections so that they can verify that. That uh, the procedure was followed for the imposition of the tax. The Department of Revenue only makes changes to the tax. Levis, the percentages that are charged to each taxing jurisdiction. On a quarterly basis, so only, only makes the changes on the first day of the quarter. And it also required that the notice for them to make the change be received. Ninety days before it is effective, so for this to become effective, the earliest it could become effective would be um, April first. And uh, that's, that's assuming that the notice, we have all the notice to them by the end of December. What's resolution number that? Um, I have fifteen eleven. I make a motion of through resolution twenty-two twenty-two-ish, fifteen eleven.
Um, yeah.
Essentially uh, changing the sales tax, the dedicated three-quarter percent tax to be used for joint law enforcement. Um. And safety, what was the word you used, but? Uh, joint law enforcement communication. Communications.
And solid waste. I hear a second.
All second, resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen eleven. Um, a resolution repealing the nineteen ninety-three countywide general use retailer sales tax. And authorizing the imposition of a three-fourths of one percent dedicated use retailer sales tax and pledging the revenue received. For the purpose of joint law enforcement communications and solid waste disposal in Atchison County, Kansas.
Is that a second or is that another motion?
It's a second, I just wanted to clarify the wording. So.
So we need to adjust my motion?
It didn't have, yes.
I.
I'm not gonna, I wanna second it to what the wording is.
Albert said my motion.
Okay, and you're gonna make the motion and have that as the motion?
Yeah. I will make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen eleven. Resolution repealing the nineteen ninety-three countywide general use retailer sales tax. And authorizing the imposition of a three-fourths of one percent dedicated use retailers sales tax. And pledging the revenue received for the purpose of the job, joint law enforcement communications and solid waste disposal in Atchison County, Kansas.
Do you hear a second? All second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes through to zero. Anything else, Pat?
Um, there were, we had a little bit of a discussion this morning that um. Uh, Mr. Zeltner brought up about having worked in on the insurance, uh, making a change on. The property insurance for Topeka Village, if you wanna consider that today.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so he had given me that.
Mr. Zeltner had looked into um, pricing and availability of uh, different insurances, so. Atchison Senior Village will switch from Westbin Mutual Company to Kansas City Associated Association. Multi-line, multi-line pool, which is K Camp for the purposes of commercial line property insurance effective one-one twenty-twenty-three. Atchison County uses K Camp for all other commercial property insurances. Uh, with utilizing K Camp for ensuring senior village property, uh, there's a big savings and premiums. So do I hear a motion to accept? It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes through to zero. Pat, you have anything more?
I do not. Uh, we're gonna need to check the session.
I need to sign.
Yep. Hey, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at one thirty-seven PM. To discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three county commissioners. Joint Communications Director, EMS Director, Emergency Management Director, and the sheriff.
It's uh, Pat Henderson, you want Pat in or not? Hmm, no, okay, no, I just wanna make sure, uh, right here second. It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye. Passes through to zero, we are going into executive session.
Back from that, executive session. Um, one and the number two.
I move, sorry, hold on. Please. Yep.
Okay.
You ready for me? I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at two oh eight PM. To discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. That the board come out of the executive session in thirty minutes in the commissioner and basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three commissioners and IT Director Ian. Emergency Management Director Wesley.
Right here a second. Sorry, it's been moved, moved in second, all in favor say aye. Going back into executive session. Okay, we're back even.
Thank you.
We're going to continue our reviews, um. We're gonna do a short.
Great.
Uh, rest and break. You need.
Sure, I'll go.
Can you make hand puppets or something? I think you should sing the song.
Thanks.
No, thanks, I already recited poetry this week, I don't think I can do more.
Thank you, thank you.
It's Brian out there.
Um.
Let's see if you find a break or maybe. Yeah, we're doing. Ma- uh, maintenance next, these are reviews, I'm talking to the camera, um. Reviewing our employees' uh, expectations, wants, needs, and uh. Just reviewing them one by one. Brian, also, what's next? We got two on bathroom break.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a minute or two here and. Yeah, we're not in yet, so.
Oh, thank you.
You want me to stick around for any reason? I don't think it's necessary.
That's going in there, that's just the doorway. I got another one. Been to you, I ran out of battery, but.
So the gentleman that you were working with from here emailed and said this is fine.
Yeah, and I'll give you that email.
Perfect, yep, I just.
Uh, I kept that, I kept that all in a section, so, and they, they have that too, down there, so.
Awesome.
Just, you think that? We have a full half hour of, of discussion here, or do we wanna shorten it, or, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just wanna get another opinion, just.
Yep.
Well, we gotta take you about five minutes to terminate this.
Oh, we wouldn't go into executive session for that.
When Mary would get here for that one, huh? I'm always telling her.
She's on, on, oh, there.
Oh, nice.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay.
So we are continuing the session.
I moved that the Board of County Commissioners recessed into executive session at two forty-two PM. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect the privacy rights of the employee. And that the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three commissioners and maintenance supervisor, uh, Brian Ogwold.
Right here a second. It's been moving in second, all in favor say aye.
Maybe we should do two next time, and we'll just extend it, we still have weeks.
Yeah.
Wanna do that?
You can do that.
Well, more than, more than three is a lot.
I think so too.
Yeah, three's the top.
No.
Yeah, and so goes, yeah, there is, come on in.
Okay, sorry.
We're back, and we're going into one more.
Okay, I moved that the Board of County Commissioners resets into executive session at three thirteen PM. To discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel as allowed by KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. And that the purposes of the closed session is to protect. The privacy rights of the employee and the board come out of executive session in thirty minutes in the commission room basement of the courthouse. Those present will be the three commissioners and Roombridge Superintendent Joe Snyder.
Right here a second, sir, it's been moved in second, all in favor say aye. Passes through to zero, we're going back into executive session. Well, we're back in again. Um, any uh, comment?
I moved to adjourn at. Three forty-three PM.
It's been moved in second, all in favor say aye.